Nacogdoches School District Board of Trustees. Let the record show that according with board members as present, notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act. Board member James Mentoio is unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please join us in turning off your cell phones to off or switch them to silent mode and I will now call on Ms. Barberick to begin the budget workshop. Thank you.
Good evening, President Green, Boardman Lewis Mato. You have a handout in front of you, but I also have a PowerPoint, but the handout might be easier to follow because the, in some instances, because the PowerPoint is in talking. So this is a board workshop tonight and on the agenda tonight, it's all me, but this is one to be discussing is the progress that we've made on the budget. We'll go over our revenues and expenditures, the fund balance, payroll additions that we've made in the general fund, the projected student nutrition budget, the projected debt service budget, the tax rate and the other additions and payroll for other funds. All right, so the budget process started this year by developing staffing standards where we aligned all campuses across the district so that we would have same-sized campuses with same amount of staff. We also approached the budget this year zero-based and we met with principals on a monthly basis to teach them how to do this zero-based budgeting. Basically, they had a start from scratch and put down what they wanted to spend their money on and why they wanted to spend it that way. We've already adopted a compensation plan and now we've collected the budgets from all campuses and departments and that is what I'm presenting to you tonight. There's still a little bit of tweaking to do, so when I finally present it next month, there will be small changes. All right, so this is where we're projecting our general fund revenues. Our local revenues are going down due to tax revenues are going down, we have rental income that is going down and we never budget for donations and current year we've lessed donations. State revenue is going down due to the property value study where we are currently appealing that and I, we're going to have a presentation from Harry Woods tonight where I think he has some good news for us, but his budget is built with, that we still don't have a not one-year process. So now this is where we'll benefit from looking at that spreadsheet. We have, you adopt a budget based on the function code, so that's why I'm presenting it here, and I'll just highlight some of the bigger changes. The instruction is going up quite a bit, that is due to the addition of aides, teachers and raises, and I'll go over that a little more until later. Staff and curriculum development is going down, that is due to, primarily due to travel being moved to federal funds as well as a reduction just in travel period. School leadership is increasing due to the addition of assistant principals. Guidance and counseling is increasing due to the addition of counselors. Student transportation is decreasing due to reduction in what we've normally budgeted for fuel. And we're also making an effort to reduce this overtime. Extracurricular, co-curricular is reducing due to reduction in staff and just cuts across all campuses. General administration is reducing primarily due to, this year we had to pay a settlement for an employee and that won't be there next year, but we also have made reductions in staff and also I have found where, I really have looked at our budget closely, 1241 and found where things could be more appropriately coded elsewhere. For instance, travel for our P E N S department, they are coded to data processing, but 1241 was picking up their travel, so I leave that over. Little things like that just make a difference when you, I mean, add them all up. So there's part of the reason for the data processing going down, that are both nice raises why that increased. And facilities acquisition and construction is going down due to us pulling funds out of fund balance that we committed towards different projects around the, around the district. We still have funds in fund balance that you will continue to uncommit and then report, but until you uncommit them, they are in fund balance. Also, due to our property value study coming in and causing us to go down in state aid, this is where we're making up the difference. This will also be the first place that we put the money back when we find out how the pill process goes.
Again, where were you going to put that money? I missed that last statement.
The first, if our property value study comes into it and we get money back in state aid, that is the first place we will stick, we will restore funds is in function 81.
Okay.
So we have ended with the expenses at 50 million point five, that is 4.4 million lower than the current year and that's, if you look at that number and the number in 81, that is pretty much the difference there. So in summary, we have budgeted revenues of 50.5 million, expenses of 50.5 million, we have a projected ending balance of 17 million. All right, some of the additions, payroll additions that we've added to the general fund. We gave a 2% flat rate for all employees, we added three assistant principals, two counselors, the counseling secretary, the director of advanced academics, three instructional specialists, nine teachers, three special education teachers, six special education aides, three bilingual aides, five classroom aides, a director of human resource and a public relations specialist. The raises came out to a little over $500,000. So staffing additions I just made come out to almost $1.6 million.
Do those staffing additions include the positions added with the grant funding for like tips?
No.
This is all general funding?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
It's a little bit hard to see, but this is a pie chart showing how our expenses are broken out. So the large majority of that is payroll. The next section that's the largest there is supplies and then the next one down is services and so forth. Another way to look at that, it's the same breakdown, but by percentage, 80% of our budget is in payroll next year. How that looks currently, this year's budget, 71% is in payroll. This is general fund only. Also wanted to point out to you about how we have been spending the extra 13 cents that we received when we passed the TR, TR tax rate. So I went all the way back to years 2012, 13 and based on that 13 cents, that first column is what we raised with those funds. So throughout the years, we've raised 7.8 million dollars with those funds. The next column is what we've spent in function 81, capital of facility acquisitions and construction. We've spent, including this year's budget, at a much lower rate, we've spent almost twice what we've raised. So we have more than met our obligation of spending on So, we have more than met our obligation of spending on facilities.
Can you email me a copy of that chart right there? Thank you.
All right, general fund balance. We are projecting an ending fund balance this year and next year of 17 million. The board policy is that we will keep three months of operating expenditures in there. So, three months of operating expenditures adds up to 12.5 million. So, we have exceeded that. Any, any questions on general fund?
Can you go back to that, that chart with the, the one with the TRE? I just want to point out something that, when we started in about 2012 or just before that, we were in a position where we were, almost had no fund balance back in those days. And this is going, a point that I tried to make way back is, because I was told that, where'd we get this big a fund balance all of a su, you know, so quickly? And it, it, the public was told, because it was the TRE funding, well, that only accounts for about half of it. The other half came out of cuts in instruction. I can tell you from, from, you go, if you go back far enough, there were a bunch of cuts and a bunch of money out of state comp money that was socked away during those times. So, we just got to be real careful as board members to be, to understand a lot of that money that was coming to us was for kids that needed the, the extra help, and we were putting a bunch of money into fund balance. Not under your realm, but I'm just saying.
But I do want to say that state comp money is calculated based on a template, based on our ADA and our poverty level, and we are required to spend 52% of that. If we don't, we will get in trouble.
I understand. But that's 52%. You said 48% can be held, can be pulled back.
Right, 48% help run the rest of the district.
Or put in fund balance. Okay. I just won't make that point.
All right, so, our student nutrition, we're projecting our revenues to be a little bit lower, mainly due to getting less kids, our ADA is dropping. As a result, we have to lower expenditures. And basically, that's coming in through she, the student nutrition installed a new roof and then this is good this year, so that's what that 359,000 is for, but next year we will not be doing that. On summer, we have a balanced budget with an ending fund balance of 575,000. Debt service. I am projecting a smaller amount of revenue, and that's due to, I believe that we will be able to lower our tax rate this year until our final certified property values come out. That cannot be calculated, but once we get that, we will reach out to First Southwest, who does that for us, and they'll calculate what we can afford to lower that tax rate to. I'm thinking it will be around 18%. Anyway, so our revenues are lower, our expenses remain what is needed to pay off our principal and interest for the year, and that will dip into our fund balance, which is our intention, is to get that fund balance down, because we can't spend that fund balance on anything but debt service. So, the general fund was built with a tax rate of $1.17, and the debt service rate will be determined after our final certified values come in. So now, I move on to the payroll additions that were added outside of the general fund. So, this is the other ones that we referred to. Everyone got a 2% flat rate. We added an interventionist, a teacher to the county co-op, an instructional technologist, a bilingual aide, two grant coordinators, two dyslexia teachers, two social workers, two counselors, two parent involvement aides, and three kindergarten and classroom aides. There's, that is, funding that is coming from. So, the raise in the other funds came out to a little over $100,000, and the staffing additions add up to 898,500. Any questions?
Two, two questions. Go back to the slide on, the, go back to slides. All right. No, go back, go back, right there. Just, just food for, for thought for people out there in the media, this is all at the campus level.
Yes.
Except maybe that, I don't know where the instructional technologists, if that's central.
That is at the campus level.
Yes, all of it.
Is that also?
All of it.
So, if you look at, almost all of the additions, none of them were at central office.
Right. Along with that TIPS too, there's summer school added and additional resources and tutoring and various things like that that will help the campuses directly.
Now, we did a little bit of bad news after my turn prepared this. We found out we will not be getting the priority and focus grant.
Right.
As a result, I'm going to have to move our funds that we have budgeted there back into general fund, but we are going out to apply for a new grant. I don't remember the name of this.
Restruct, I believe it's restructuring grant. I can't remember the title. Restructuring grant, I think, and it's for three campuses that qualify in the district. We'll apply for all three.
The three that, that we're giving priority.
We'll apply for all three.
Right.
That, it's a competitive grant, so I'm not looking to see, get all three, but we'll take any of them. And that's for McMichael, T J R, and that, that qualify.
What happened with the priority and focus?
It's going away. No one will be getting it.
It's just something there. It's like, we had, I wanted to have the opportunity again to, to apply for the 21st Century Grant, and they took it away. So, they're, they're changing, they're taking a lot of the grant monies and changing them to new grants now, different kinds of grants.
If I may, I'd like to walk through a couple of these outliers on the proposed budget that you're working on. I see in Function 11, which is instruction, we're increasing that by 754,000. I want to applaud you for that. This time last year, I was deeply encouraging moving more into our campus level instructions, so thank you, thank you for, for heating that and adding that additional staffing on the campus level. It is greatly appreciated. I know you have to make cuts from other places to make that up, and I see that, you know, $431,000 of that's coming from central administration, which, again, I applaud. In comparing our budget to surrounding districts, it looked like we were about a half million dollars over in what we were spending, and, and central administration as compared to other districts, so that's going to line us up much better. I, I would encourage you to keep looking now. I'd, I'd feel a lot better about it if we were getting close to that half million mark in cuts at administrative level and directing those resources as much as we can to the campus level. I do, I do see that significant decrease in, in curriculum development and instructional staff development. That'd be Function 13. Can you hit that for me again, Ms. Barbrick, on, I just want to make sure we're not taking, depleting our resources for teacher staff development too much.
Some of that is from personnel budgeted here.
Okay.
That will not be.
So, administrative cuts, staffing cuts?
And to make up all the huge increase or additional, it has to come from somewhere.
Right.
So, we're looking at travel, so we cut travel quite a bit, but we're opening up federal funds that have not been opened, and that has been controlled on the district level. We're opening it up to campuses so that they can use it to make up for those lost funds.
Very good. And I assume if we're, if we're reducing travel for staff development, then that we would be increasing opportunities for local staff development?
We're not, what we've done to help reduce fees, funds, like I told you, our monies, we've looked at everything we can this year, and I promise you, there's a few other items we're looking at to find more money. But staff development is critical, you know, to us for success. So, we're not cutting staff development in the sense of just, we're keeping it streamlined and providing what we need in a consistent manner, not just a variety of, of things just for the heck of it, should I say?
Very good, focused.
It's focused and consistent.
And we're allowing for federal funds to be.
Right. And then also, you've got your TIPS grant, just picking some of that up.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I just want to be watchful of that. I mean, I applaud, I applaud the efforts, but want to be extremely, want to be extremely watchful that our teachers are getting the excellent staff development that they need. Student transportation, I know, this is, this has been a, a repeated call or plea for me. I see a reduction of 323,000 there, which is a good start, but as you recall, we're, yeah, I know you are, I think, you know, as compared to other districts.
What was the numbers, Pam?
We were, we were $1.5 million over.
What other districts?
What other districts? Oh, for example, Lufkin, being just our neighbor to the south, it, it seemed like that was a huge outlier to me. What is the status? I know we were bringing in someone to make some recommendations.
They will be here next month to present their report, but in the meantime, they have a lot of research to do and a report to write, but they, they were here for two and a half days and interviewed many people and looked at everything related to transportation, and they will.
Do you feel like they walked away with some, some good, good ideas, or?
Yes, they do.
All right.
They're going to talk to us about our routes and our overtime and our staffing, about reporting that we do to get the best, the most amount of money with what we report, which they, they did say that we were doing a good job there, that they were very pleased with the department and they, on how committed all the employees were, and, but they saw areas that were difficult.
Well, I'll look forward to hearing that report next month. I'll be quite excited to, to see what their recommendations are. Finally, I think the last, the last thing that I marked here that, that I wanted to, that kind of got my attention was Function 81, the facilities and acquisitions, construction. I know that typically, or what I saw last year was, it looked like historically, we tried to put a million dollars in there to do routine facility repairs. I absolutely understand what you're saying, and that if we do come back with that, looks like from what you're showing us on revenues, we've got about a half million dollars up in the air based on our appraisals. Is that accurate?
With what we, what Gary Woods shared with me, it looks like we might get. I have down 690,000.
Okay, so, and.
It might be around that amount.
Okay.
He's still, he, he's still going through the appeal process.
Yeah, and I know we'll hear more about that tonight. I believe he'll, he'll be here to report on that, so that, that does worry me, that that $200,000 figure is just, yeah, it's just not very realistic. So, hopefully, we'll learn more about that tonight, but I, I think it's worth noting that that's worrisome.
It is. You're right.
Now, anything we don't, we don't finish spending this year will be carried over into next year.
Sure.
Could you go back to the, where our fund balance is? All right. So, to, to, our, our board policy says that we will keep three.
Three months.
Three months. My calculations were a little off yours, but I had 12.6, but you have 12.5 million that we have to keep in, in, in fund balance, but that's going to leave us close to 5 million that we can, we can deal with after, after the budget process is gone. We've got 5 million that this board can deal with to, if we need some capital improvement.
Some of that will be non-touchable, because part, fund balance isn't just cash.
Okay.
It's, it's assets minus liabilities. So, there's many things that go into it, but part of that is cash, but part of that is your inventory, that is your, our infrastructure, all our buildings are dead, so it's not an easy calculation to say that we have 5 million left. It'll, it probably will be more like 3 million to 4 million.
Well, I guess my point is, we will have some money.
Yes, we will.
That we can allocate to capital improvement after the school year starts and we know, because you said we, we would have another, I think I heard you say, we're going to have 575,000 left over from this past year's budget? Did I hear you say that a while ago? Fund balance from the, unless we.
Nutrition, I think.
Less on.
That was nutrition.
Nutrition. Oh, nutrition. Excuse me.
But we do expect to have some left over this year.
Yes, we will have. What, what is currently budgeted right now is we're, we're using up our fund balance, but so much of our construction occurs during the summer, and that gets split in half, so what we budgeted will then fall to fund balance, and then we'll have to turn around in July and bring it back out.
Okay. But we will have some money to spend. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Lisa.
Yes, thank you very much.
That brings this, is that, is that it for the?
That's it.
All right, that brings this meeting to a close. We will re-adjourn, we will restart at 6 o'clock for our regular board meeting.
What was the difference in our transportation in Lufkin?
The, when you mean, when you say difference, do you mean the amount?
No, I know the amount, it's like 1.5 million.
Why? I don't know, I've been asking them to find out.
Do you have time to get everybody together?
No, their students are about equal, and what I understand from talking is that their area is actually larger than theirs. It's theoretically because of their ADA and the amount of driving they do. Beoretically, because of their ADA and the amount of driving they do.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School District Board of Trustees. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and notices this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Board member James Montoya was unable to attend the meeting tonight. He's actually out of the country. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in the order shown on the agenda and please join us in turning off your cell phones to off or switch them to silent mode. At this point, I'm going to ask GW Neal if he would, as a new board member, would like to open up our invocation.
Will you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come this evening with thanksgiving in our hearts. Thank you, dear Lord, for all your many blessings. Father, we thank you for such an awesome God you've been to give us the choice to, the students in this, in this school district. Well, as far as you continue to bless us, give us your knowledge and wisdom that we may always do the right thing. And as Father, we ask thee to bless him and amen we pray. Amen.
Now I'll call on Ms. Whitbeck to introduce the NHS students that will be leading the pledge to the flag this evening.
Good evening, President Green. Board member Superintendent Dowdy, glad to be here from Nacogdoches High School. And at this time, I would like to be five-time TASC Sweepstakes Award-winning student council members to come forward. These are our representatives here tonight to lead us in our pledges. I would like them to introduce themselves.
May accord.
I'm Sister Cindy.
I'm Daisy. I'm a outgoing community service and dash chair officer.
I'm Iris Louise. I'm outgoing PMP, Prime Ministerism and treasurer.
And now the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Is that all right, because we're Nacogdoches High School students and high school never sleeps. Thank you so much for having us here this evening.
Thank you. The board will now conduct a real short executive session to discuss the items posted on the agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as allowed by Texas Governance Code 551.074. No voting will take place in closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. It is now 6:03. We will be back pretty quickly. We're reconvening in open session and now we'll turn the rules say that Board of Officers will be done by the Vice President and also I'll turn it over to Reverend Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The floor is now open for nominations for the President of the NISD School Board.
I would like to make a nomination that Reverend Irvin be the President of the School Board.
I second the motion.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor will show by elevation of the hand. Those opposed? Unanimous.
Congratulations.
Any time to change your... There you go.
Sure. When we go back there, Holly, we're right there, but not quite sure. She knows the...
Thank you. We'll now have nominations. The floor is open for Vice President.
Mr. President, I have a nomination. I would like to nominate Pam Fitch as Vice President.
Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. All in favor of Ms. Fitch?
No?
You don't have to have a second.
I'll take the first.
All in favor will show by the elevation of the right hand. Unanimous, Ms. Fitch. Thank you for serving and congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll now hear nominations for the Secretary for NISD School Board.
Mr. President, I'm going to name Steve Green Secretary of the School Board.
Steve Green has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. All those in favor of Mr. Green serving as the Secretary will show by elevation of the hand. Vote is unanimous. It's so ordered. Mr. Green will serve as our Secretary. Thank you. The board will now conduct another executive session pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Section 551.001, 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. And we've... The time is 6:22.
Congratulations.
Let me thank you for your patience. We're going to continue our closed session here in the boardroom and ask that the community would excuse themselves so that we might hear a grievance with an NISD employee. Thank you for your patience.
Mr. President, I recuse myself and let the record... Mr. President, I recuse myself and I like what the record indicates that I'm leaving as well.
Thank you, sir.
...
The Board is now reconvening into open session, and the time is 8:08. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I would make a motion that we deny the Level 3 grievance, and that we uphold the administrative decision at Level 2.
It has both been moved and second. Are there any discussion or questions? Those in favor will show by raising of their hand.
I have to recuse myself, Mr. President.
Those that oppose, we have one recusing. Thank you so much.
I would like to make one further comment, and that is, the Board took note of your presentation, and we understand through the administration that steps are being put in place to improve that process. So I want y'all to, I want y'all to understand that. We also understand, Mr. Brand, that the positions, and that we needed to make our decision on the law, and that wanted to send that message to you, that it wasn't part of the official decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is the time which the Board has set aside to receive citizens' comments. Individuals wishing to address the Board should have completed the form located on the table by the entrance door, and provided it to either me or to Holly prior to the meeting. Comments will be kept to a maximum of three minutes. Groups of five or more individuals having the same concern shall have a single spokesperson for that group. The Board reminds speakers that this is open forum, and it's not the time or place to bring the Board complaints about particular program or particular employee. The Board has adopted specific complaint policies and procedures for presenting those complaints. The Board cannot respond to the comments in this open forum, but can inform you of policies, complaint procedures, and available, that's available under Board policy. Forms will be considered on a first come, first served basis. Speakers need to address the Board from the podium, and the total line time allotted for this portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. Holly will keep the time for us, and do we have any speakers?
For I am.
Okay, we are here. And I will call Ms. Tracina Jones.
Good evening, President Urban, board members, and students. I am addressing you guys tonight as a parent. I do work for the district, and you may hear me at times referencing my professional capacity, but I just want to make it known that I'm speaking as a parent. And the purpose for me addressing the Board tonight is to share my heart and my concerns as a parent. I have two sons that attend Carpenter, and they are having a very difficult time because of some negative things that they are experiencing. And they are saying, "Momma, don't want to go to school." And my children love school. They love to learn. They come home after school, and they're avid readers, and they are writing, and they do very well. However, I'm very concerned about the things that they are experiencing, and it has left me, as a parent, sitting on my bedside crying for two hours because they're having nightmares. They're afraid to go to school, and I think it's important that you guys know the impact of those things that they are experiencing, that they are having at Carpenter. My sons have been punched in the stomach. They've had their food taken. They are being recruited, and I would say into gangs. Just this morning, leaving the house, my oldest Just this morning, leaving the house, my oldest son who's in second grade, said, "Mom, do you know why Trevor is wearing the red shirt?" He said, "Kids are at the school and they're talking about crips and bloods." And that concerned me. So on my time today, I left and I went and spoke to Ms. Brice, the principal at Carpenter and I addressed those concerns with her. Before Mr. Adams left the campus, I had no opportunities to communicate those concerns to him and also forwarded my concerns to Superintendent Dowdy. And you told me that you would make some positive changes at Carpenter and you would deal with discipline next year. And since February when we had that communication, my kids are continuing to experience these things and it's hurting our family and I'm sure other kids who are in that school environment are being hurt as well. And I'd like to know that the professionals in this district are going to do what's necessary to provide a safe learning place for my kids and the other students. And that's what I'd like to address, I would give out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anna Middlebrook.
My name is Anna Middlebrook. I'm a parent of a first grader who was transferred into Nettie Marshall and I have an incoming kindergarten student who has come and also had to go to Nettie Marshall. I'd like to thank the Board, who is giving them their time to oversee our district, letting them have their children, and I'd like to thank Ms. Dowdy, who has a difficult job attempting to improve our schools in order to meet the basic standards of the state. I'd first like to praise the staff and teachers at Nettie Marshall. Nettie Marshall has successfully accomplished the goal of passing state tests, educating students in all elementary fundamentals, while also achieving the goal of teaching children to be literate in dual languages by the time they graduate fifth grade. I know Ms. Dowdy agrees that Nettie Marshall is a shining star in our district where many of our schools most have a problem. I'd like to address any changes to the dual language program at the kindergarten level or any level next year. The abandonment of the dual language program undermines the hard work that the teachers and staffs have done to develop it. This is the first year that Nettie Marshall is graduating students who have completed the dual language in its entirety. We do not need research to see the merits of the dual language program and the benefits this type of education affords to our students. It is clear that discontinuing the program in kindergarten sets up each additional class to not receive the benefits of dual language. The Gomez-E Gomez model taught at Nettie Marshall is proven successful, but it must begin in kindergarten. By suspending the dual language program, the district would be effectively stopping the entire program and denying our students yet another special program that benefits our children. The program is still in its infancy, yet has already shown success, so it's now is not the time to suspend it. Nakadoche's Public School will never be able to compete with charter, private, and outline districts if we don't keep programs such as the dual language program at Nettie Marshall. I know that every elementary campus needs qualified Spanish English teachers in order to accommodate our native Spanish speakers. But to cannibalize the flourishing program at Nettie Marshall would be to the detriment of our whole town. Nettie Marshall is not a school that can be quietly dissembled. Teachers feel supported there, students feel safe there, parents feel heard there. The community benefits from the work done at Nettie Marshall. To stop the dual language program in kindergarten and therefore every succeeding year, you'll be taking away the chance for our bright students to be challenged, for our Spanish students to be fully taught, and for all Nettie Marshall students to have a skill that will enable them to be truly successful up in the world. The parents of Nettie Marshall fully support the leadership, Principal Dron, the dedication and skill of the teachers, and the importance of the dual language program. I know the School Board values this community. Please show their support at Nettie Marshall and the dual language program.
Thank you so much. Ms. Peck.
Welcome new Board members. Good evening, President Urban and Board members and Superintendent Dowdy. I'm excited for you to learn more about the goals the district adopted to improve student outcomes. We have a long way to go, but an option you can consider within your authority as a Board is to review local policies. For example, last year the Board cleaned up conflicting discipline policy and now district employees can get kids. If a parent submits an opt-out request to the Board, their kids aren't subject to this policy, but if other kids are like, "Mine's school paperwork doesn't always make it from school to backpack to home to backpack to teacher to principal's filing cabinet." Besides, this policy does not align with the goals filed with the DEA. By legal definition, corporal punishment hurts kids. I'm happy to brief new Board members with research I've shared with returning Board members since last August. District policies supporting brutal discipline will not help students achieve Star Master standards. Beating kids doesn't help economically disadvantaged students or students on IR campuses meet Star post-secondary readiness standards. An act of violence against children, including verbal abuse from principals, decrease student graduation rates and will only lead to future acts of violence. We spent tens of thousands of dollars to champ out this kind of behavior that leads to beating kids. Please eliminate corporal punishment in our schools. I watch our district pursue projects that make campuses look prettier and convince the community that things are A-OK inside our schools. Today, hundreds of thousands of dollars are needed to unwind the failed tech center experiment. The money spent on legal fees with a cadre of attorneys to protect employees and fight parents is staggering. If your actions are aligned with your goals, district resources should be used to promote positive student outcomes. Instead, I remain shocked by this administration's commitment to front $9,850 to paint district logos on a water tower. If $9,850 is handy, how do you justify it spending to improve a water tower owned by our city? Rather than poaching teachers making a difference for students at Nettie Marshall, invest in professional development for teachers on struggling campuses. Send a teacher back to school to earn a master's degree with an ESL certification. In March, we learned that ninety-one students have been identified as homeless. The paper reported on lunch shaming in our cafeteria. $9,850 could be spent on a ton of meals. Food security and full stomachs lead to improved student outcomes. As a Board, you oversee one of the largest employers in our town. Every resource is vital when it comes to turning things around. Please spend our money where it's needed most. Please invest in projects, policies, and employees that serve the best interests of improving Nakadoche's ISD. Thank you.
Good evening, President Urban, Board members, Superintendent Dowdy. It's time. Student outcomes won't change until adult behaviors change. These are all statements that we've been hearing over the past year, a year in that we've had some positive changes, but what the community perceives is the same old thing. Because our leadership trained over the last year, I've tried to change my talk about the schools in a more positive talk and I've asked challenges to our system, what would you do different? I've even asked the public during my school board campaign, what are your priorities for Nakadoche's ISD? As our leadership needs to be aware of public perception, here are some of the responses I've seen. I'm actually shocked that my kids transferred to Nakadoche's ISD three years ago in San Agustin to find out that Nakadoche's ISD is more disorganized, more dysfunctional, segregated and outdated than surrounding schools. It's time to upgrade my leadership of the entire county, you know? My kids attend TJR for the past few years. There's been nothing but constant changes even throughout the school year. ISD seems not to be organized and it's scary that it took so long to get a superintendent. The roads around TJR and the entire school are bad and the entire system, the people in it don't seem to have morals. Parent communication is very important to me. Please create opportunities for parents to be involved and engaged in decision-making at the level of administration because it's key to success. The community needs more we and less us and them in our school district. I wish they had tuition reimbursement. I'd go back to school and get administrator certification. Teachers need to be paid in the summer to plan for semester and use the time to meet as teens for teen teaching for children. Veteran teachers are leaving due to low morale and conditions at NHS. Many are not being renewed. Our children are at risk and now will have blocked scheduling for the next year and dual credits will not be possible and all kids should have this possibility. We need more teachers, teacher age, less administrative roles. Communication with parents is not good and needs to be reestablished. We need discipline that doesn't push kids back into the classroom too quickly. We need incentives for good grades. We need reading programs in elementary schools to encourage kids to read because kids need encouragement to read. $9,850 for a water tower? What are we thinking? Aren't we having trouble paying for teachers, teachers aid and supplies? Maybe our leadership priorities are off track. In order for our community to get behind our schools, our leadership is going to have to make and model the behaviors that we want our children to have. It's our mistakes, work to fix them. We're coming up on a new year and rather than talk the talk, we'd really love to see the leadership walk the walk. I say these things tonight because the school's important to me. We have a new team and I really want Nakadoche's ISD to be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We now come to the information items and reports segment of tonight's meeting and we'll begin with the superintendent's report. Ms. Dowdy.
Thank you. Can you hear me? First of all, I want to address the issue of the dual language program. I know there has been discussion in the community regarding the dual language program academy at Nettie and I have brainstormed over the last couple of weeks with educators and Ms. Middlebrook came and visited me and it was a great conversation and I thank everybody for their input. So with that, you know that Nakadoche's ISD offers many academic and extracurricular programs to students and one of those programs that is an outstanding program is the dual language program currently offered at Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language. The program currently serves students in kindergarten through fifth grade, or actually pre-kindergarten through fifth grade. Nettie Marshall, this is what I have made a decision on for next year, okay? And because we're going to have a committee that's going to be formed for rezoning that's going to encompass looking at a variety of issues in the district. Nettie Marshall will remain a magnet campus for the seventeen-eighteenth school year and the dual language program will continue to be offered for K through five students. Pre-K will be moved to Carpenter. The district will however spend time analyzing the overall effectiveness of the dual language program through the rezoning committee. I don't know if many of you were here, but it was suggested, what, two months ago, that we are going to be needing to looking at rezoning for the district to equalize opportunities across the district for our students in all campuses, especially the elementary campuses. That's going to open up looking at every program that we have, the effectiveness of it and how we can support our, how is it affecting other children in the district and how we're going to serve bilingual as one of them throughout the district effectively? Because we have to look at the scores for all children. Any changes to the program will not go into effect until the seventeen-eighteenth school year has ended. If changes are made to this program, it is our goal that the students who have entered the dual language program will complete the program through the fifth grade year. Applications to Nettie Marshall Academy have been extended. Applications are available at the district support center, the Nettie Marshall campus or online at the website. June one is the new deadline for the Nettie Marshall magnet applications only, not to the other districts or the other campuses. So we will extend that to the kindergarten classes starting, immediately starting tomorrow through June one, okay? And we will keep that program in effect for next year while we are studying the effect of all programs throughout the district when we do rezoning.
So to clarify, you're going to keep Gomez and Gomez curriculum in place in the kindergarten level for next year?
Yes, that is correct. So, and pre-K will go to Carpenter. I want to make it clear too that we have three campuses that will serve pre-kindergarten. Carpenter serves Regay, they serve TJR, they serve Carpenter, and they will serve Nettie. You have Fredonia that has pre-K and you have BQJ that has pre-K. All three pre-K classes or campuses serve bilingual and English-speaking students on those campuses, okay? Is that clear? Okay. So next, I want to talk about a few other things that are campus program changes for seventeen-eighteen. TJ Rusk, I had mentioned this earlier this year, TJR will not be a magnet school during the seventeen-eighteenth school year. We took off the Fine Arts program. Emmeline Carpenter Elementary, grades PK through five. Students zoned for Gay Elementary, Thomas J. Russ, Nettie Marshall Language Academy, and Carpenter School will be there for pre-kindergarten. The campus is no longer split into an early childhood elementary campus. It is now a pre-K through five campus. Carpenter Elementary has been awarded the Texas Title I Priority Tips Grant, which will add additional staff like social workers, interventionists, teachers, and aides. Fredonia Elementary, PK through five, has also been awarded the Texas Title I Priority Schools Tips Grant, which will add additional staff, the same as Carpenter. We have added or adding additional help in the primary grades for reading, a stronger reading programs that some of you mentioned. Our primary literacy program we are committed to implementing is a consistent district-wide reading program. This will be a non-negotiable. We met the other day with principals in the district and we made a list of non-negotiables that we know will get us to where we need to be and this is one of them. We will be using the New House Phonics program, starting in pre-K and then going through the primary grades. We have a fantastic workshop this summer, it's a week long, for training all of our primary teachers. We pay the teachers to come in and we're paying for all the products and everything to serve those teachers in the classrooms. The start times for middle school and high school have been changed for next year. There will be changes to the classroom course schedules next year and we have created an academic achievement position that will be working at the high school focusing on high academic expectations and high academic achievement. Right, not hearing me? This will be an academic program focused on developing excellence for students K through twelve. That individual is going to be looking at all our higher level academics such as STEM. I'm hoping we will eventually get to STEAM, which will include the Fine Arts program as well, UIL, GT, and all those programs and we'll be looking at that from the elementary grade through high school so we can increase our expectation and have higher academic achievement for kids. So those are our new campus and program changes for next year. Now my superintendent's report for what's going on in the district currently, the state of the district. We kicked off this month as celebrating our amazing teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. We had, what was it, Blue Gene Week? Did everybody get that message? Blue Gene Week and we had cookies, I think at the end of, sent out to the campus for the end of the STAR testing. We also finished up this year STAR testing. Let's all cross our fingers, we're waiting for those scores to come in. That should happen by the middle of June.
Well, probably May 30th, EOC tomorrow and then June 2nd.
June 2nd, okay. Okay. Middle school early release tomorrow is May nineteenth. No school on May twenty-ninth in honor of Memorial Day. District early release on Thursday is June first and no school for students on June second. Graduation will be on June second at the SFA Coliseum at eight PM. We hope you'll all attend. Student and teacher achievement. The Secondary Education Department and Educational Leadership at SFA honored several Nakadoche's High School teachers at their collaboration celebration luncheon on May seventeenth. The SFA interns nominated these teachers either in the fall or spring semester. Melissa Bohannon, are any of you here tonight? If you are, please stand up. Melissa Bohannon, Miranda Clay, Jacob Jeffries, James Merrifield, Cindy Pruitt, and Dawn Parris. Thank you so much for your work. Are anyone here? No? Okay, well, we congratulate them. The NHS flotality class took their certification tests, all passed the practice one, and they sent the written portion off for grading. Great turnout for an Nakadoche's High School's event. The NHS, thousand guys in ties. Dr. Quinn, are you here? Are you back here? So now what do the girls want?
A thousand girls and pearls.
A thousand girls and pearls. So we're going to have to come up with a thousand strands of pearls, aren't we, for those girls because they are adamant for it. The Dragon Net Spring Show kicked off this evening at NHS. The production will be available tomorrow and Saturday. Tickets can be purchased an hour before the start time. NHS had a large number of BIM students earn certification in Microsoft Office Word from Ms. Crenshaw's and Ms. Cadman's classes. Nakadoche's High School Powder Puff Football Game rescheduled for May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Both games will be played at Dragon Stadium. Freshmen- Both games will be played at Dragon Stadium, freshman versus sophomore at four thirty PM and juniors versus seniors at five thirty PM and entry fee is a dollar for all. Tickets for sale are in the ninth grade office. This summer's football and strength and conditioning camp registrations are now available on the district website on the athletic page under departments. This year, three hundred and fifty-five students at NACADOTUS High School participated in the STARS program and approximately a hundred and thirty-five students were certified on the program as of May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. I was very proud of this. Austin Bank and EverFi started a partnership a few years ago in which EverFi provides teachers with an online financial literacy program called the Austin Bank STARS Program. Austin Bank covers the program costs so that the program can be used at a no cost at the school. So we had a large number of kids complete that certification. Over thirty elementary students across the district will meet on May nineteenth for NACADOTUS ISD's twentieth annual Battle of the Blue Bonnet books. The competition complements the Texas Blue Bonnet Books Program, an incentive that encourages children to read at least five of the twenty books included in the two thousand seventeen Blue Bonnet Award list. We had six students win a place in the poetry contest that the young authors of Northeast Texas have. We had multiple students from many of our campuses participate and placed in the Daughter of the Revolution contest this year. Congratulations to all the students who worked so hard on these projects. Campus and personnel updates. We have plenty of field days, I don't know if any of you have been able to participate in those field days, awards ceremonies and banquets going on all over the district. Only ten more days of instruction before the students are released for summer vacation. So moms and dads out there, they're getting ready to come to you now in ten days. Community involvement. NACADOTUS ISD will conduct a public planning meeting on Wednesday, May twenty fourth. The meeting will be held at the district support center from three thirty to four thirty. The purpose of this meeting is to provide information concerning participation in federal programs and to get value input with regard to content and services for the seventeen eighteen school year. Then we have K student accomplishments. We have six hundred and eighty-six certificates have been awarded to the NHA students in the areas of welding, certified nurse assistant, phlebotomy, Microsoft Office certifications, food handler, food manager, OSHA career safe, OSHA career specific, cyber safety and security, personal, financial literacy and Valvoline automotive. That's great job, Janie. Approximately one hundred and twenty graduating seniors will be wearing honor cords for graduation as a result of these certifications. May three through eleven, cosmetology students received their operator's license by completing part two of their state exam. The lowest grade in this group was a ninety-two. May twelfth through eleventh, no, May twelfth, eleven students completed their phlebotomy certification testing. Christopher Dickens of Angelina College certified all students as passing their practical exam. Tomorrow, the high school robotics team competes in Kilgore. Today, four additional nurse aides students are testing for their certification. Saturday, six students test for Texas Nursery Association Floral Design Certification and Technology students Samuel Jacobs, Luca Costa, Cooper Henson and Graham Beckwith along with two of the technology education teachers will travel to Florida to compete in the National TSA event in June. So we're very proud of all that you have done, all of the teachers, all the work that you've done out there and all the students' awards and accomplishments. Thank you.
Ms. Doughty. We have senior scholarship on twenty-sixth.
Senior scholarship on May?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth at the auditorium.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the central appraisal district report by Mr. Gere Woods. Thank you for being here tonight.
You should have a, you should have a magnitude that I can validate. This is a report on the property value state. We failed our audit in NACADOTUS School District and we have been appealing those numbers and have paid some concessions and we're a whole lot closer than we were. We still have two opportunities to get ourselves into a considered open value assignment so that there's no loss in state funding. What I want to do, there's a cover page in there that I'm going to read so I don't get all past and get worded. Behind that, you have a copy of every single property that has been tested by the state. My category, as you will see, I've made changes in reading those protests that we've won and those values that have been changed. So I'm not going to go over that. I believe that we can look at, this is every single house, every single building that the state audited and it shows their opinion of value, what the tax rule is and what changes they've made to their values. There's some significant changes, there are properties in there that we had on the rolls are three and a half million dollars that the state initially raised at over seven billion after our appealing notice that they changed their numbers down almost to ours. So there were quite a few references that they were over by more than a hundred percent. So there were quite a few errors that we pointed out and we wanted others. Where we are right now, we're hard stable property that was left that we're still appealing. One property, one single property is holding us out of open value assignment so we've got to concentrate on that property. But I want to read this to you. The Property Tax Division does an audit of school district values to determine state funding levels. They test by categories such as one, single family properties, two, multi-family properties, three, vacant lots, four, rural properties, five, commercial properties, six, industrial, seven, minerals and eight, utilities. They take random samples of copies and do them in value stratas such as grouping homes from one dollar to fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand to a hundred thousand, a hundred and one thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand and so on for each category of properties. Then they take an arithmetic or mean average, arithmetic mean which is an average, of each strat and apply that percentage to the total tax rule value for that category that determines where the state says our value should be. When the study first came out, our adjusted value which is the taxable value after the removal of state mandated exemptions. If you're twenty percent optional, you're optional over sixty-five or not removed, the state doesn't pay for those under T two. They only do that under T four. But they take out the exemptions and our value was one billion, eight hundred and forty million, eight eighty-eight, three eighty. The state's value was one billion, nine hundred and seventy-five million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, four twenty-nine. We are only allowed a five percent variance which is referred to as the confidence interval hence the reference to being inside the confidence interval which is optimum for a school district. The state then calculates the upper and lower limits and we have to be inside these two numbers. The state's lower limit is there one billion, eight seventy-six, six eighty-two, six fifty-eight or is one billion, eight seventy-six, six eighty-two, six fifty-eight which is ninety-five percent of the state value. The upper limit was two billion, seventy-four million, two twenty-eight, two hundred which is one hundred and five percent of the state value. Those are the two numbers we have to be inside. Our value of one billion, eight hundred and forty million, eight eighty-eight, three eighty is outside the confidence interval by thirty-five million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, two seventy-eight. As a result of our initial appeal, while our value remains at one billion, eight hundred and forty million, the state's numbers have changed based on arguments that we've won so far. The state's value has reduced to one billion, nine forty-two from the original value of one billion, nine seventy-five and the lower limit is now one billion, eight hundred and forty-four million, nine thirteen, one fifty-three. The upper limit is now two billion, thirty-nine million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five thirty-seven. That means that we are now four million, twenty-four thousand, seven seven, seven seven three outside the confidence interval. That's a reduction from the original of approximately thirty-three million, thirty-four million. We've completed the second phase of our appeal, have pointed out the accounts that we do not accept recommendations from the Property Tax Division and our intent to go further in the process. The Property Tax Division has altered their second set of recommendations based on that response and we're now outside the confidence interval by two million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, four seventy. And it is time for us to make our first appearance in Austin. The next phase is a non-site hearing in Austin where we'll be able to have a conversation about the remaining portions of the appeal that the state has offered, even though concession on or a partial concession that we did not accept. This hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, May the twenty-fourth at one PM. These are the harder sale portions of the appeal but there's still room for us to make some additional adjustments that will put us inside the confidence interval. These apply primarily to large apartment complexes and hotels, specifically one single piece of property that's keeping us out. In the event we are not successful at this round of appeals, we have the option to take this to a SOA hearing that is a hearing conducted at the State Office of Administrative Hearings basically for a court magistrate. This is our last step and we could probably need a legal counsel with us for this hearing. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If I didn't explain something well enough, I'll try to explain it better. If you want to go over the rest of the documents that I've given you, I'd be glad to but I know that it's been a long evening and probably this is not the type of place that you want to.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods, if I may and I'll try to make this quick, I do know it's late and it's been a long meeting already but this of course is very important to us. It's about a little over a half million dollars in school funding that we're losing as a result of this. What is your confidence level on this appeal? You're saying we're about, let's say, three million dollars away right now from where we need to be. Where's your confidence level that we will get to where we need to be?
Well, to shoot straight with you.
That's what I want.
I have been in this situation in my thirty-seven years at the appraisal district many times and when the state decides they don't want to accept what you have, they make that one single statement, we don't accept what you have and that's it. Finding the state is very, very difficult. You have to have absolute on file proof. I feel like I do. The one property, it's a sale, they got it from a service called CoStar. CoStar put in there that they, from all appearances, considered this to be a verified sale. The owner is in Monroe, Louisiana. The property, when we put the property in the template that the state uses to appraise property, their appraisal, and I compared it to four different appraisals they did on four separate properties very comparable to this one, their appraisal would have come out somewhere between a low of three point two million dollars and a high of three point eight. The sale is five point eight. I also provided a letter from the owner that said the bank when they did their financing considered the value of the real estate to be three point seven million dollars. They required reserves be put in place and they financed one hundred percent of everything they did including the reserves required to be in place in an account. So they financed everything they could. I don't know how else to present to the state that five point eight million is not a valid sale. The state couldn't have gotten there. I've already got values ready for two thousand and seventeen and I followed the state's criteria for income producing properties which is gross income, less vacancy, less expenses. I used their cap rate, I hit three point eight million dollars. I am not putting the property on the tax rule at five point eight. It's not correct. Will I win? I don't know. Am I going to try? Yes, ma'am. But the state doesn't have to use confidence.
Unfortunately, that's true. When will we know the decision from the May twenty-fourth hearing?
I will know when I leave on May twenty-fourth if I was successful and then I have seven days to give a response whether or not I want to build a SOA.
Okay.
And I would like to build a SOA.
Absolutely.
Because I think if we walk before a magistrate with that information, it would tank the sale enough that at least they should take it out of the study.
Okay. So we can expect information on the twenty-fourth and if we need to appeal to the SOA, we can get involved, legal representation involved in that? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I have been, I've never been to SOA. I've been to Shark Top SOA. But when you go before a judicial hearing and a magistrate, you better know the law when you get in there. If I walk in there myself and represent it, I think they would shoot me down in a heartbeat.
Absolutely.
And I have visited with Miles Bradshaw, I think you'll have heard that Miles probably has experience in that situation and he was adamant about, I don't think you want to go in there without him.
Okay, all right.
But, you know, I'm going to.
And I'll be honest, I'll be candid with you, I'm not sure, I mean, you're going into the hearing by yourself, is that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, I'm the only one that can testify.
Okay.
And I'm the only one that presented that.
Okay, and is it, should we have involved legal representation before this point?
No, ma'am, this is very informal.
Okay.
And I, we've been successful and one of the reasons we've been successful is because we didn't walk in with, and I might be rude, but there are large law firms, the law firm that represents the appraisal district, they have a full set of staff members that do just this and they file appeals on behalf of the tax entities. And when they do, they don't get any more relief up through this informal hearing than I would, I don't believe, because I'm the one that's got to provide all the information for it. I can represent that just as well as anybody else can.
Sure.
But, and the people that do that for that law firm, they're not attorneys, they're staff members that, part of what their service they provide is they do appeals for school districts. We've been doing this for a long time and this is not my first round and it's not my first time to get shot down either. So.
I understand. All right, well we'll look forward to hearing from you on the twenty-fourth.
You won't hear from me on the twenty-fourth, I guarantee you because I'll be driving back from Austin that night and I'm not going to be talking to nobody.
Oh, shoot us, shoot us a text message, shoot us a text message or something to Ms. Doughty because this is, this is six hundred and something thousand dollars of our budget. This is important and we need to know.
Let me say one side point. This is our excuse for doing real appraisal. We've got to do a real appraisal. Our, the best thing we can do is in category A. Category A is almost sixty percent, that's single family houses. That's almost sixty percent of your tax rule. Category A, we're ninety-five point seven nine percent of market. Category B apartments, we started out at point seven nine four percent of market. We have moved that up to ninety-one point one six. So except that one sale, it'd be over ninety-five percent. Rural property, we're a little over a hundred percent of market.
I noticed that.
Real estate, category E which is rural improvements, we moved that ninety-five percent up to ninety-nine point six three. Commercial, we were at ninety point seven, we moved that up to ninety-one point eight and commercial personal property, we were at ninety-five point seven, we moved that up to ninety-six. But the key to success for NACADOTUS is in category A. We're doing a complete reappraisal, we just got our notices completed, we're going to mail them next week. Remaining twenty-six thousand notices of increase, okay? If we're successful on half of that increase, that's going to generate somewhere around eight hundred and seventy-five to nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue M and O.
And that'll be, that'll be a blessing. That won't hit us till the next year though, so.
No, it will hit you in October. What hit you with them is the state revenue for the next round. So, you know, we, from our standpoint, we're going to do what we can to offset that dollar per dollar plus which I think is going to, is very reasonable for us to do that. We just got to go through a lot of protest hearings come June and July and you mail out twenty-six thousand notices because you're going to get a lot of response from a lot of people. The average increase for a homeowner, we haven't done a real appraisal in three years. We were shooting for one and a half percent per year, four and a half percent. So we're expecting four and a half percent average increase on residential property. We're not expecting quite as much in the rural area where it's acreage because our land values are better plus they have productivity which they don't play on market so it's a whole different animal. We're going to have about five, six percent increase on commercial property and this is, over three years we haven't done this, so it's roughly a percent and a half to two percent a year which is reasonable. All we're seeing in urban areas is ten to fifteen percent per year. We don't have that kind of growth and we're not hitting the taxpayers that, you know, that high. But to react to the study, we were a year late reacting. But to react to the study, we were a year late reacting.
Yes.
We didn't anticipate that they would appraise real delator at seven million dollars. They've now lowered it to three point five. There's one piece of property at five point eight that I don't believe is a valid number, although the firm they used said it's a valid sale. That's questionable. I think if I can put enough doubt on that sale, then they'll have to back off of it, and that's the key. That's, I'm protesting everything.
I understand.
That one single property is the key. And, so, yeah, right now we stand to lose money. I hope next week I can tell you we're not.
I hope so too, sir.
Thank you so much.
If it's fifty, I'll send somebody a text and just call.
Please, please text her.
You did tell me that because our interval is drastically changed, that our, that that five, that what was originally five hundred or six hundred thousand is gone down.
Well, I can't estimate, Elisa and I talked about that, and I told her, I said, "I don't have the ability to tell what the loss difference is between where we started and where we are now," but I think she does have some. It didn't change it as much as I thought it would, but my trained authorities on that interval, that confidence interval, when I saw thirty-six go to four, to me, that's a big change. It didn't necessarily change the gross numbers from a billion nine seventy-five to a billion nine forty. That's still larger than the tax roll. But you had some numbers, didn't you?
Yes, with the numbers he has written down tonight, we'll have four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars more.
Excellent.
Now, that keeps confusing me when you say.
More than what I presented in a message tonight.
Okay, so what's the loss?
Well, the loss was initially six hundred and ninety thousand.
So do we subtract the four hundred and something?
Yes, yes.
So the loss is now two hundred or less?
Yes, that's right. Two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
That's better than five million.
That is much better than.
Especially if we're going to raise eight hundred thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Coach Gary Dowell, School Health Advisory Council Year End Report, Shaq Committee.
Thank you. Good evening, President Irvin, and Board Members, and Superintendent Debbie. If you want to join me, look at page twenty-six of the information that we're giving, given earlier this week, that's where I'm going to bring you from. I'm giving you your report for Student Health Advisory Council. The NISD School Health Advisory Committee, Shaq for short, can be four times during the sixteen-seventeenth school year. Committee members include the district administrators, the director of students' health services, the director of student nutrition, NISD coaches, nurses, and counselors, as well as parents and various members of our community. Meetings were held from eleven thirty to one P.M. at the District Support Center and were open to the public. This year's committee focused on two main agenda items, one of them you'll be hearing more about tonight, and that is the update and revision of our district wellness policy. This policy has been revised and edited twice, is now finalized, and ready to be presented for board approval. The other agenda item was the implementation of a district-wide life choice education curriculum. We met with representatives from the esteemed education program and have obtained copies of their educational material. While the committee feels there's a need for this type of educational opportunity within our district, we're still in the research phase and are not prepared to give any recommendations on this matter to the school board at this time. We currently have four meeting dates on the district calendar for the seventeen-eighteen school year, and we will be meeting with district principals over the next few weeks to obtain nominations to represent each campus for next year's Shaq training.
Thank you.
Page twenty-eight, you see the names of the.
Yes, ma'am, page twenty-eight are the current committee members.
Thank you, Karen.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
We appreciate you.
Now, we're here from Ms. Shante Davis, the announcement of May 24th, 2017 Public Meeting Federal Funding Planning for the 2017-18 school year.
Good evening, President Irvin, Board Members, Superintendent Dowey, and others in attendance. We come before you this evening to announce the annual planning meeting for the 2017-2018 federal funding under ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. On December tenth, 2015, President Obama signed into law that Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, a reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five. ESSA replaces its predecessor, the No Child Left Behind Act of two thousand one, or NCLB. Nat judges ISD is eligible to apply for funding under these programs that are projected on the screen. Title One, Part A, funding assist schools with high concentrations of students from low-income families with resources to meet the state's student performance standards. The purpose of Title Two, Part A, is to increase academic achievement by improving teacher and principal quality. The program is carried out by, one, increasing the number of highly qualified teachers in the classrooms, two, increasing the number of highly qualified principals and assistant principals in schools, and, number three, then increasing the effectiveness of those teachers and principals. Title Four, Part A, which is returning, was previously focused on safe and drug-free schools and communities, but it's now directed toward improving students' academic achievement by, one, providing access to and opportunities for a well-rounded education for all students, two, improving school conditions in order to create healthy and safe school environments, and, three, increasing access to personalized learning experiences supported by the effective use of data and technology. Mr. Kevin Webb will now give a brief overview of the other three programs.
Starting with Title One, Part C, the migrant program, we serve a relatively small number of students in migrant education. This program recognizes that students and families that move frequently in the agriculture industry do have special needs and are in need of sometimes special support in order to be able to be successful in school. Sometimes that includes providing for some of their basic needs, things like school supplies, sometimes warm clothing, sometimes medical care. It also provides them additional technology that they might be able to take home, and provides an oversight to be sure that the school people know that these particular students may suffer some gaps in their education and need additional intervention and support. Title Three, English learners and immigrant student support, I always kind of lump those two together. This provides funds to supplement programs that we already have in place to serve our English language learners. The key word is that these resources are to supplement and not supplant things that we already have in place. We're able to use this to provide additional support, sometimes in professional development for teachers so that they can better serve our Title Threes, either our English language learner students or especially our newcomer students. As you may be aware, we have as many as a hundred students in our district that are immigrant students. Our second most spoken language right now is Somali, which you might be interested to know. And those students, of course, come in sometimes from refugee camps and different situations that make it very challenging for them to be successful. We have an excellent program in our, particularly at Nat Judges High School, where we're proud to say that we have nine juniors that came to us from zero to two years ago that are going to graduate on time in two thousand and eighteen. So sometimes that provides, for example, we were able to hire a instructional assistant specifically to help those students and assist teachers in the classroom. And we have also a great experienced partner in the state of Boston University, where we hired a young man who was actually a Nat Judges High School graduate who's working to become a math teacher, a young man who tutored our students, not only our newcomers but also our other ESL students in algebra, and has been a real asset to us, and I think it's going to show some success. We've had a number of our immigrant students show success by, you know, pass our ESSA exams, and thinking about living in the country for just a short period of time, that's really a tribute to our people at Nat Judges High School, which we have, those needs also are on the tree in middle schools as well. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
The ESSA planning meeting will be held here at the District Support Center next Wednesday, May 24th, from three thirty to four thirty P.M. We cordially invite parents, community members, and staff to participate, and special invitations have been extended to private, non-profit schools within our student school district boundaries. If you have any questions about either of the programs or the new ESSA Act, feel free to contact either Mr. Red Webb or myself. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Webb? Thank you. We move now to the consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there's a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda matter, and it will be set aside for a further discussion and a separate vote.
All right.
President Irvin, I move approval.
I'll second that approval of the consent.
It has been moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Neal, seconded by Ms. Ficht, to approve the consent agenda. Are there any discussion? All in favor of the show by the regular right hand? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
The action agenda. Let me get that. We now proceed with the action agenda. All items listed will be discussed and acted upon separately. All right. Ms. Shante Davis, consideration of a board action on the district improvement plan.
Again, good evening. The process of developing the district improvement plan this year, as you know, has been along in our system. We began the comprehensive needs assessment, or CNA, in early November with the district advisory council, and at that time, we took the data from the state and also from local sources. From these two half-day sessions, observations, and suggested strategies resulted in over a dozen chart pages of information. At that point, we suspended the needs assessment and district improvement plan work until the board's efforts under the direction of Deputy Commissioner A.J. Crable produced the district's goals and goal progress measures. The next step for the district advisory council, or DAC, was to continue study of additional data organized around the eight areas aligned with the critical success factors. This four-day work session facilitated by two Region Seven trainers resulted in responses to twenty-four probing questions. Unfortunately, though, the schedule that day did not allow the facilitators to complete their agenda, which had actually included formalizing specific strategies, assigning those strategies to designated goals, reviewing that work to tweak any strategies requiring clarification, and completing a formative check to ensure that the plan was meaningful and reasonable. Since that DAC work session, I've completed those tasks and presented the draft to Superintendent Dowey for her review and approval. The product you have before you tonight is the proposed district improvement plan for Because the terminology used during our Lone Star Governance process differs from that in our web-based improvement planning tool, which is called Plan for Learning, I've provided this slide by side to show you the correlations. What are the board's student outcome goals are designated in the district improvement plan simply as goals. Your goal progress measures, or GPMs, are listed as performance objectives. Now, in consulting with the eight oh six technologies who put together our Plan for Learning software, they said that they may be able to customize our program to be able to align it with the Lone Star Governance terminology, but I haven't heard back from that organization yet to see if that is going to be done. This slide shows how your valuable work has been transferred to the district improvement plan. To better explain how the plan is organized, this is a duplicated copy of the plan. On pages fifteen, five through sixteen, I have in my left hand. Pages seventeen through thirty-eight, I have in my right hand. In this hand are your goals and your GPMs that you developed with Deputy Commissioner Crable. On this side are the strategies that our DAC created in our two days of planning. The strategies are true, or the strategies are actually the true working part of the plan, which will comprise day-to-day responsibilities of district staff. The strategies are constructed around the critical success factors, and because some strategies address more than one GPM, this provides a more consolidated blueprint for the designated administrators to follow and evaluate on a quarterly basis. This slide shows a layout of how this unfolds. You have in that first column, your strategy. The next column, the correlation to the ten Title One components. In the next column, you have the staff members who are responsible for monitoring completion of that strategy. And you have to keep in mind, this does not mean that they are solely responsible for it, they are just responsible for monitoring that strategy and being sure that it's completed. The next column shows a place for evidence or ongoing documentation of work and applicable funding for implementation, and then you have a column for designated formative and You'll also see state system safeguard strategy and federal system safeguard strategy in some places. This just identifies those strategies as ways to address the areas where the district failed to meet the standards of sixty percent and eighty-seven percent respectively for student groups shown on a separate accountability status report that we received in addition to the paper. I'll go on and tell you, if you look at the plan, where you see the goals and GPMs, you'll see under strategy descriptions, the critical success factors addressed by the strategies under the performance objective or GPM, and then also a list of the Goal Five strategies that are applicable. Since many districts are moving toward the Lone Star Governance model of planning templates such as this one in Plan for Learning, will ideally be modified in the future to accommodate the change. Otherwise, our district and campus improvement plans will move back to becoming the very extensive documents that are cumbersome and not very user-friendly. Are there any questions about how the dip is laid out? Are there any questions about how the dip is laid out? Or any questions about any of the strategies? As I said, this is presented to Superintendent Dowey throughout the process, so.
I'm very excited to see our goals and GPMs being implemented into the district planning, so that's fabulous. I would make the motion that we approve the District Improvement Plan as presented.
Second motion.
It's been motioned by Ms. Fitch and seconded by Mr. Neal to approve the District Improvement Plan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shante.
The next item is the revision of the compensation plan to be presented by Mr. Martin.
And the administration's asking to remove that tonight and place it on the next agenda.
Okay.
I will make a motion to table the item until the June Board Meeting.
Second.
It's both been moved and seconded that we will table the approving of the compensation plan to the June Board Meeting. All in favor? So ordered. The next item is the first reading of revised Local Policy FFA Student Welfare Wellness and Health Services by Mr. Gray Burton and Ms. Robin Thatcher.
Good evening, President Urban, board members, Ms. Dowey. We would like to, we would look at 495 of the board book. We have our Policy FFA Local. This, you'll read on there, was a lot of annotated versions were struck out. This had to be completely replaced, so this is a brand-new policy. As you read down in the summary, there was a requirement to have this by June 30, 2017. The Shack Team Committee has been meeting throughout the year, and we've met at least three times about this in particular. They had a checklist and a lot of different ideas and things that we could incorporate into our policy, and this is the policy that the group decided on. They will be attaching a plan to this policy that it will be implementing also in the next year. Since we had to have the policy first, then the plan would align with that. I have Ms. Thatcher up here with me. If you have any questions, I will direct those to her.
Any questions?
Thank you so much. Okay, this is the action item. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. The board approves the first reading of NISD Policy FFA Local.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the first reading of the FFA Local. Any questions? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you. Board will now call Mr. Reggie Hudson, proposal of the extended electrical contract.
Mr. President, board members, Ms. Dowey, thank you for allowing me to approach it now with the possibility of some energy electrical contract extension. To do a little introduction, for those of you that are new members, let me just take a few minutes, if you don't mind, and kind of explain how this process works and why it works, so you'll kind of understand a little later on what decisions you need to make. The electrical use is a large part of our budget, about $1.3 million each year. So we monitor that very closely, and we look at all ways we can say that on that. In order to make a good decision, you kind of have to understand the process, because it's somewhat complex as far as knowledge about how, knowledgeable on how it all works. It started back with deregulation, and I know you all have all heard of that. And here's how it affects us with the local law. In the old method, we were via, we used a company called TXU. Everybody in the city used TXU. TXU produced the electricity, TXU delivered the electricity, and TXU sold this electricity and built this electricity. That and law in 2001 changed, and so things would be regulations. So the main first purpose of the law was to break up TXU as a monopoly, so other things could come into play, and competition could come into play, and it would no longer be a monopoly, that it would require that you have one company that would produce electricity, one company that would deliver electricity, and we know that is on board here. That, by the way, is not deregulated. And then we would have people that could sell electricity on a competitive market, and those sell, those people sell, but also really what you were trying to be using electricity. In addition to that, we also had brokers that whoever felt like they'd like to do that could become a broker, and they could get different things together to assist their customers in purchase electricity. Two of the more common things are aggregates where a broker could get a group of people together, for example, a group of schools together, and go with that group to a group of companies and try to get a lower rate, and we have some of those. In addition to that, it helps to know when you can purchase electricity, because you'll see in a minute, that can make a big difference, even what day you purchase electricity. The billing, you're all familiar with that, is everybody gets their own bill. With us, the bill is a whole lot different. First of all, you're built on the uses. That's how many kilowatt-hours you use every month. And that multiplied by your rate gives you how much you are charged for the uses. That's pretty well cut and dry. The other part is called a pass-through, and that's your billing company passes through other charges without making any changes to them to do that. Now, there's a lot of other passes charges. You've ever looked at your phone bill, there's all these different charges on that. It's the same way with electric bill and our electric bill. So we have a lot of pass-through charges that are regulated. One of the first ones, one of the most expensive, one of the hardest to understand, is distribution and transportation. And that's done by on board. And keep in mind, they're a separate company now, so they had to figure out some way to charge you how much you need. So what they did is they said, okay, we're in charge of the lines and the poles and the transformers. And so the bigger you require, the more electricity you require, the bigger we have to have the lines and transformers. So the bigger we have lines and transformers, the more we're going to charge you. So the more electricity you use at any one time, that is the peak demand that you have, and we're going to charge you by that no matter what. No matter how much you use, or if you use none, we're going to charge you every month by that peak demand, because we're going to have to build those lines and build those posts and build those transformers to your place. So that's kind of a set thing. Each month, you set a peak demand, and they go by that for the distribution. Another one is a lot of fees, different fees, all kinds of fees, and taxes, and that's a big thing, the taxes. And you'll see in the morning, that's a critical part in our project endeavor. And there's a lot of other small charges, a dollar here and fifty cents there, that it's kind of hard to figure out what they're actually charging you for. To give you an idea of the history of contracts, we've been doing contracts now about 25 years ago, and the history of contracts just kind of gives you some kind of an idea. In 2012, 2015, we entered into a contract of 6.6 cents with the General Land Office of Texas. Now, the GLO is the state of Texas. And we'll show you in a minute how that works. From '15 to '18, we entered into a contract of 6.2 cents. Keep in mind that one penny is about $100,000 to us each year. So a penny's a pretty good deal. And starting in May of '18, a year from now, we will go to 4.8 cents. That was a pretty big savings. We did a two-year contract, and that's all they would offer, two-year contract. Pretty volatile time of energy use in that time, so they didn't offer big, long contracts. But we'll be entering into that contract in 2020. Here recently, we found out that the market had somewhat stabilized, but it was going in a particular direction, and then we began to look at, what could we enter into from 2020 on? Would it be of our benefit to enter into some longer-term contracts? And so that's what we're going to look at tonight, is it is feasible for us to look at some other contracts. To give you an idea about the General Land Office of Texas and why we entered into those particular contracts with them, is they are the state of Texas. They contracted with a company called Pavella that administers their sale and distribution stuff of electricity. So the state of Texas actually owns a lot of natural gas wells. They sell that natural gas to the companies that produce electricity, and as a result, they end up with electricity, and they sell it to us. The big thing that they do is they do not charge you some of the fees and some of the taxes. One of the biggest ones is called a grocery seat tax, and this is kind of like a sales tax. So even though we're exempt from sales tax as a commission, we're not exempt for that if we buy it from anybody else besides the state of Texas. And they exempt us from this tax, and we'll show you in a minute how that's going to affect us. In addition, we don't have to pay PUC's public utility fees, and that's another pretty big thing. All these together, we feel those small fees, is about 3%. So you're looking at about $25,000, $30,000 each year that you can save if you buy it straight from the state of Texas, not state of Texas, taxes and fees. One of the other advantages is it's an inter-agency agreement with them. You're buying from another state agency, so you don't have to do an RFQ and all paperwork and stuff for bills. They can auto-sell to government in various school districts, cities, counties, things like that. By the law, they cannot make a profit, unlike other companies that they're in business to make a profit. The state of Texas in this area is not allowed to make a profit. Now, if they make any other excesses over what their cost is, that excess goes to the Permanent School Fund. So we benefit if they make any extra money. Now, according to them, they have contributed $100 million to the Permanent School Fund since that started in about 2001, 2002.
Give me that number again.
$100 million. Now, if you're not familiar with that fund, from my understanding, what that does is that goes into an account that then is used to secure or as collateral to our bond purchases. So that's why when we go out and build a building and sell bonds, we get a trip like ready, because we've got millions of dollars sitting on there as collateral. It's just like any other loan. You got a lot of collateral, you get a good interest rate, and that's what we do. So this thing here is important to us in other areas. So it's a thing that really helps us out. Some of the cost factors, a little bit about electricity, you know, natural gas is one of those critical things about the cost of that. In Texas, most of the electricity is made by natural gas. There is some wind, and there is some solar, and there is some winter, and there is some cold, but natural gas is my form of liquid. So natural gas is really, has a direct relationship to how much electricity comes. So why are we here now looking at something higher than the road? And it's because it appears from experts that the price of natural gas is going up. To kind of give you an idea, here's the price of natural gas. You see over to the left, it starts out at about 2012, and the price of natural gas goes up to about 2014. If you remember, 2014, that's when the bus kind of hit with gas and oil and natural gas and everything, and everything started down. And as you remember, last year, 2016, things began to recuperate, and things started back up. Now, the question is, is it going to continue to up? Well, if you do that, you could really make a lot of money in the stock market. Nobody knows what's going to happen. It appears over the, from the experts, that things are going to continue to go up. So if things continue to go up in the natural gas market, they're going to continue to go up in the electrical market. And so basically, what we're looking at is maybe trying to buy when it gets lower, while it's still low, before it goes up. You look up there, and it gets up to $5 from $3, and that's $2 more, you're looking at, you know, 2, 3, 4 cents of electrical prices. And remember, a penny is $100,000, and so you're looking at a lot of money if we bought $5 versus $3. So that's kind of what we'll look at. So what we do to kind of get an idea about what the prices are, is we do a bid process. And what I do is I send out notices to the bigger companies, and all of them are ready to find, and say, hey, we're looking at buying some more electricity. Would you give us what you would bid for electricity on a certain day? And I did about 10, and I got the bids back, and we looked at the bids. And we select one of the bids, the best bid or whatever in the particular venue, and then we looked at all the venues and everything. And then we tried to figure out, we'll try to figure out after we select the best venue, when is the best time to buy, because remember, it's all about natural gas. Natural gas changes every day. The price of electricity generally changes every day. So we got to find the best time to buy if we're going to do this. We basically will enter into a 24-hour time window at which we say, okay, we're going to buy on this day. We got 24 hours to tell them yes or no. And for that reason, then we need to select someone who decides to do this, someone that can have the authority to sign the contract at that particular time. So that's the bidding process that we kind of have been through and started out looking at. The electrical bids we started were effective 510, and so here's what we've got. We've got the company, we've got the bids, the kilowatt per, not kilowatt, and the number of years that they will offer a contract. That has varied from seven years to one year. So since some of them only offer a one-year contract, in order to get apples to apples, when we're looking at their bids, we're looking at everybody's first-year bid. And I'll show you later, if you've got a five-year bid, each year is different. So the bids that you're going to look at now are bids for the first year of one-year contract to do that. So the first one was TXU, and they were the least expensive, and that bid was like 3.7 cents per kilowatt hour, and they had a seven-year offer, a seven-year contract. Now, when we talk about seven years, we're talking about from 2020 to 2027. We're talking a long way down the road. The next bid, most bid, was the GLO or the state of Texas at 3.63. The next one was 29 at 3.68, Cero at 3.73, and Hudson at 3.76. That's not mine, I'm not a liar. And our local mayor, Percy Clark, is a broker, and they were able to bid a 3.875 with a one-year contract. So all these bids are for the first year of the contract for apples to apples. It is going from the top down. You see, the majority of them are watching five-year contracts. You can get any contract you want. They offer up to five-year contracts. The annual cost, and this is basically saying, okay...
You want to just wait for questions at the end?
Yes, if you like. I've got to talk to that too long. Or if you kind of question out, if you want to do it, I'll make...
All right. You were saying that this is their first year. Do we have any inclination on whether it's going to go up after the first year?
This is certainly not that.
Okay.
So... So that 3.6 doesn't mean a whole lot to you. But, so you know, we use about 10 million kilowatts a year. So if you multiply 10 million times 3.5, then here's what you come up with, our annual cost for the usage, remember, there's other things, just for the usage. But TXU is $357,000. The state of Texas is 363. Reliance is 368. Cero is 373. Hudson is 376. And Curtis and Clark is 387. That's the annual usage that we would use for this one-year contract that we have. So you still see the TXU as our least expensive bidder. Now, we mentioned about taxes and fees, so we're going to have to pay taxes and fees. So if you take TXU and you look at their low bid of $357,000, the taxes on that first year, that's the grocery receipt taxes and the free use taxes, including the others, is about $20,000. For the taxes for the GLA, they will not charge us any of those taxes. We were exempt from those. For the other ones that we use, Reliance will have to pay the same taxes, and Hudson as well as Curtis and Clark, they will all require that we pay their $20,000. So then when you figure that cost in, and you look at the total cost for the other ones affected bid, you look at TXU at 378, 363 for the state, 389 for Reliance, 393 for Cero, 396 for Hudson, and Curtis and Clark's at 387. So when you look at the total amount, including the taxes, then it kind of switches back to the least expensive one for our total cost, from our perspective, is the state of Texas, 363, TXU at 378, and then Reliance, Cero, Hudson, and Curtis and Clark. So you can see, by about $15,000 for one year, the state of Texas is that much less expensive than our next closest bid. So that puts that... Now, to answer your question, Mr. Green, I've taken the state of Texas's bid to show you that their bid on the first year was 3.6 cents, okay? If you want a two-year bid with them, then it goes up. And the reason it goes up is because they can't predict for sure what's going to happen to them here from now. And so they hedged their bid with a little bit. At three years, it's 3.7. Four years, 3.78. And at five years, it's 3.34. So it goes up. And in a minute, we're going to be looking at what you want to do as far as looking at, if you want to do this, four-year to do. And so as you see, it goes up each year. Of course, we get a guarantee that five years from now, it will not cost us any more than 3.34. So we have to consider what's happening, what's at the... To give you an idea, if we use one year, if we take one year savings, and this would be 2021, so to speak, we will save $152,000 from what we are currently at the rate. Now, remember, next year, we're going to 4.6 or whatever it was. So if you take that rate, and then we go to this first-year rate here, we will save an additional $152,000. If we go for a two-year rate, we will save $291,000. Keep in mind, it's going to be cost level, so we're going to save quite a bunch of money. Three years, $421,000. Four years, $540,000. And in five-year contract, we will be saving $646,000 over what we will be currently paying when we start this, to do that. So quite a bit of savings. Now, what we, as a school district, are going to look at, is that seven years down the road, we know what we will be paying for electricity. We know it won't jump up real high and do that. So when we're looking at budget and board decisions, things, that is a guaranteed expense as it will not go up. Does you have a question?
I do. You put these numbers up here, and it makes it look all fancy, fuzzy, warm and cuddly, but it makes me very nervous to play the futures market, and that's exactly what we're doing when we start going out to 2020 to 2027. We're playing way out. It makes me very uncomfortable to make decisions that future boards are going to have to live with. And let me give you an example. And you say, oh, but the rate is so good. Let me give you an example. We haven't even started the May the 1st, 2018 contract rate at 4.8 cents. If we were right today negotiating a contract, a two-year contract for May the 1st, 18 to April the 30th of 20, we'd be looking at rates down around 3 cents. So they played the future market, and they lost, you know? And now we're going to be paying the penalty for it, not unlike we didn't, haven't been paying the penalty. I would say the same was probably true back in May, the 15th through the 18th previous contract, where we were paying 6.2 cents, which was, I could just about guarantee you, was well over market value for that time period, but they'd signed that contract early. Makes me very uncomfortable to go that many years out. A lot can happen in five to 10 years.
I agree with you. I understand. Keep in mind, my job here tonight is not to convince you to enter this contract. My job is to present the data to you, and let you make up your own mind. So I'm not trying to make it look good.
I appreciate you saying that.
And you're exactly right. If we'd have known back then that it was going to go down to three, we'd have been better off. We could also have been looking at five or six. And that's what I'm saying. If we knew what was going to be in the future, we made a future contract, we'd have made a lot of money. I'm just saying that here's what the prospects are. Here's the way the market is heading right now. It may not be this way tomorrow. I'm just saying, we as a school district and you as a board, if you decide that we want to guarantee, looking down the road, yeah, we can make some more money if it's cheaper. We can make, we can, well, we might have to pay some more if it goes up. But as a school district, the people's money, is it better for us to have a guarantee to know that we, five years down the road, are not going to have to pay 10 cents for electricity? We may want to have to pay two, but we're not going to pay 10. And I'm not saying that's not going to convince you. I'm just saying exactly what you're saying.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Thank you so much.
Yeah. It's asking us to look seven years down the road, you know? And that is a long way to look.
And I'm not asking you, I am not asking you to look down the road seven years. What I'm saying is, seven years, this is what it is. Two years, this is what it is. When you get to the end, the question is, how many years you want to be? That's when you say, I don't think we need to do this. You notice some of the years are three years, and that's what the board then said, I don't want to make a decision. But five years down the road, another one will have to continue.
How often do you look at, how often do you look at these? Is this something you, is it something you're looking at annually, biannually?
I look at the price of natural gas almost every day. It's on my desktop. And so when it starts going down and down, and then it starts going up, another thing happens. When the buying time is good, the phone starts ringing, and the salesman says, hey, we've got a good deal for you. And I said, I was waiting on you. I said, well, that's, the natural gas is good. And so then we begin to look at it, and then extremely go through this process. And it makes no difference to me whether we say, hey, it's not ours now, I'll do it back. I'll go home, and I don't have near as much work to do as if you say, let's go.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hudson. Good job.
It's not for me to decide. I am the guy that is forced to use the facts.
Thank you. Good job.
So that being said, here's the considerations that you want to do. Do we even want to talk about extending the contract? We've got something for another three years. If we don't want to, that's fine with me. If we do want to, we need to select a bidder. I just showed you what the cheapest rate is. I'm not mentioning that.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we table the item to, on the electrical contract.
I will second that. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the electrical contracts be tabled. Any questions? All in favor? Sure of ends? So ordered. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. The board will now conduct another executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meeting Act, and is followed by the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.074, 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. In action, the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 9:43. It is now nine forty-three.
The board is now reconvening into open session for the last time tonight.[1521.12][1521.12](Laughter) And it's 10:25.
Just one comment I'd make, Mr. New Board President, is for a guy that's always pushed for shorter meetings, your freshman didn't go quite well.[1534.88][1534.88](Laughter)
But I want the record to reveal that and reflect that Steve set the agenda.
Got you. Good point. So maybe you shortened it as much as you could.
Yeah. I can't wait till the next one. Y'all gonna love me.[1548.08][1548.08](Laughter)
And congratulate you.
Of course, this is the last meeting that we'll have to wear a suit and tie to school.
Oh, for summer, because I'm a vet.
We could...
June 15th, we're going to be doing the official board meeting.
Okay.
Till what date? When? Y'all wear a tie.
And they pick the hot button.
When? June 15th?
June 15th. If June 15th is the next board meeting, we'll be doing that official board meeting.
Okay. Okay. Okay, are there any motions?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to approve the employment of the teachers as recommended by administration.
Second motion.
Has been moved in second. Are there any questions? All in favor? So ordered. It's signed. Somebody go ahead and take my place.
I move that we adjourn.[1607.84][1607.84](Laughter)
Have a good night.